Good morning. Welcome to the December 19th, 2023 meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. If you could, please stand and say the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we're going to have our agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same, that passes. And we have our EDA.
We'll need to recess.
Yeah, we'll need to recess.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, that passes. Now we'll do our EDA. Right. Thank you, Kevin. Nancy?
Mr. Chair, would you like to do an agenda review?
Please.
There are no changes to the EDA agenda today.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
Second.
I motion a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same.
I'll move the minutes from November 21st.
Second.
Got a motion, second, for the minutes of November 21st. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, that passes. Now we're going to do the Blue Earth County Public Housing Operating Budget.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy. So today I brought before you the 2024 budget, and the 2024 budget was approved by City Council on December 4th, and so we're bringing it to you for your official approval. And you do have four different budgets that are provided there. We have the public housing budget, which is for $461,533. We have the capital funds, where annually we receive $252,000. And this year we have double that amount in the budget so that we can do some needs assessment work as part of our RAD conversion. And then we have the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which has 479,820. And then Breckenridge has 134,900. So we're asking you to approve the budget for 2024 so we can present that to HUD.
And with approval?
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the EDA budget. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. And next we have our Section 18 Disposition of Public Housing Program application.
And that is part of the RAD disposition program. And we're looking at starting with the phased process being with the Section 18, which gives us a lot more flexibility being a small housing authority. And so we can take some of our smaller scattered sites and transition them from public housing into a Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher. And so we have about 75 units. That includes 66 of our scattered sites, as well as 19 units of at Breckenridge. And we want to take 19 of the scattered sites then and put them into that Section 8 conversion process. And this would be a long-term project-based assistance, so it could go indefinitely. We start out with a contract with HUD for 20 years, and we believe it's beneficial for us to transition from public housing to this Section 18 because traditionally the public housing budget has been unpredictable and can be fluctuating, and the project basically does long-term stable housing or stable funding. And with that, we're able to raise the rents up to the market, and so we can set the rents here for our public housing up to 110% of the fair market rents, which we use for our Housing Choice Voucher Program. And that is an increase of about $400 a month per unit. Right now, we're at 85% of the fair market rents, so going up to 110, you can see there's a significant difference. That gives us the revenues as an EDA to control those monies and save them and invest them to do the modernization we need. But then we also have the ability to address other affordable needs in our community as well. We can do more projects like the Breckenridge. We can use these funds to leverage that type of thing. So it is a benefit for us to do it in that manner, and that's why we were looking at this conversion. Part of the process does require us to dispose of the units, and what we would be doing would be disposing them from the EDA to the county, and then the county would actually own them. And the county would actually enter into a contract with the EDA then to administer the vouchers for the program. So it's just kind of a technical term, and it just transitions the funding from public housing to our Housing Choice Voucher Program. It will really streamline all the budgeting processes and all the reporting requirements. It will take away a lot of additional paperwork that we've had in the past with HUD. And today we're providing you with a copy of the application. It's basically a compilation of a lot of different information, general information about the housing authority, property descriptions, and estimated property values. We provide them with a copy of our annual agency plan, which we approved in September. And we do get a letter from the county also supporting the conversion with the EDA. And we have consulted with our residents, and we've done an environmental review on the projects. And we won't be actually disposing of any units. We won't be tearing any down or anything like that, and we won't be displacing any tenants through this process, so none of that is relevant in the application process. But we hope with your approval today, we would be then submitting this application to HUD on December 22nd, the end of the week here. And HUD does take a review process. It usually takes about four months, and then we'd be converted those units into the Housing Choice Voucher project-based units. And then at that time, we would take the rest of the units through a RAD, small PHA blend, which is a different conversion for some of the properties that have more units on the site. We have to go through that RAD conversion. So we'll come back probably in June and have you go through that process. But today we would like you to approve this application going into HUD for the Section 18 Disposition of the Public Housing.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Any discussion?
Is this the first time we've done this, or does this happen?
No, this is the first time, and it hasn't been an option in the past. And I think the government was looking at better ways to fund it, and the voucher program has been able to be more sustainable than the public housing. There are times where they still will need some public housing across the country, but it's just a newer way for them to better utilize their funds and have us transition. So it's the first time that's been offered to us to do this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. And that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Got a motion of second to adjourn the EDA. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. And we will start back up with our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners' agenda with Drainage, Mr. Craig Astenson. And Ryan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And let's see, we're going to start with County Ditch 36. Good morning. Welcome to the final hearing for the proposed petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 36. Motion for the agenda review.
There are no changes to the agenda today, Mr. Chair.
I'll move the agenda.
Got a motion of second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. The purpose today's hearing is to listen to the appointed viewer and engineer and hear their reports on this proposed petition, as well as to receive comments from all parties interested in the proposed petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 36. Order of business for this hearing is follows. Staff will review the judicial documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer and appointed viewer, and then we'll open for public comments. If you'd like to make a public comment, please wait to be recognized by the board chair. When recognized, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. I will ask the Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, Ryan Hinnaker, to review the judicial jurisdictional, I don't know how I'd get that, documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing notice mailed out to landowners on November 21st of 2023. Notice was also outside this building, which is the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse. Notice was also published in the Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks, including the dates of November 21st, November 28th, and December 5th of 2023. We also have a quick memo. County Ditch 36 watershed is more than 4,200 acres and is located in Butternut Valley Township. A petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 36 public drainage system was received by Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on March 30th of 2023. A public hearing for the proposed petition, including a review of the viewers and engineers' reports, is required. On November 7th, 2023, by assigned findings in order, the Drainage Authority set a final hearing date of December 19th, 2023. Today's requested action, at today's final hearing for the proposed petition to outlet additional lands into County Ditch 36, we are asking the Drainage Authority to consider the approval of the drafted or subsequently amended findings in order and order the approval granting the petition for additional acres to outlet into County Ditch 36. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
I'll move to accept the affidavits in the legal record.
Second.
Got a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. That motion carries. I will ask Chuck Brandl of ISG to please come up and review the engineer's report.
All right. Good morning. Morning. So the petition, and the map is on the screen for those that are taking a look at it. There's approximately 12.3 acres on the Heinzie property that were considered as part of the petition. 7.7 of those acres were outside of the watershed, so this red line is the whole watershed boundary. And then the shaded area here is the area that was considered. Zooming in on that, we did obtain the proposed tile maps and how this land would be tiled, looked at the capacity of the system. When you look at the capacity, if you take the outlet of the whole system, there was a negligible effect for the seven acres. The next nearest branch, lateral D, we ran the calculations out to the thousandth. Usually we go to the hundredth. There was one one-thousandth of a change in the drainage coefficient for adding those seven acres, but that area also drains through some wetland acres, and by the time it would get to the public system, there'd be negligible effect. So in our opinion, we would recommend approving this, the negligible effect on the system adding the 7.7 acres to the watershed. So that's a summary of our report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, for that report. We'll now hear from the appointed viewer for this proceeding.
Good morning. I'm Mark Behrens. I'm the viewer that was appointed to this petition into 36. I'm a member of the Minnesota Viewers Association. We work on petitions like this quite often. This parcel that is petitioning into 36, there's about 58.4 acres within that parcel. I handed out maps that show a lot of information there to the commissioners and some of the public, but there's 58.4 acres within that parcel. There's 45.2 acres of that parcel that are already in JD 29. JD 29 was just redetermined last week. We had the public hearing on that system. Also, in this 58 acres, there's already 4.6 acres that are in County Ditch 36. There's .9 acres of road right away, so we end up with that 7.7 acres that Chuck is talking about that are petitioning into 36. On a petition like this, there's two things that come into play. They're petitioning into a system that was established actually back in 1915, and so we have what's called an outlet fee. Basically, they buy into that system, County Ditch 36, because the landowners within that system paid for the system being established. They paid to maintain it, and they've done all the upkeep on that system. Information from the county we received, this County Ditch 36 was redetermined in 1999. Since 1999, there's been about 153,000 that's been spent on that system for repair and maintenance. So we have what's called an outlet fee into that system. They buy into that system, and we've done a lot of these, and the viewers look at what are they getting, what are they buying into. There hasn't been a ridiculous amount of money spent on that system. We've had buy-ins at $10 an acre. We've had buy-ins at $250 an acre. So the viewers determined that these 7.7 acres would have a $50 per acre outlet fee or buy-in to that system. So the 7.7 times the 50 bucks is $385 of a buy-in fee, which is minimal, but like I said, they aren't tying right into the open ditch. They're tying into a tile, and they're a long ways away from the system. The second part of a petition is determining benefits so that those 7.7 acres in the future continue to help pay for repair and maintenance on County Ditch 36. In the redetermination in 1999, the 4.6 acres that are already in County Ditch 36 have an average of $343 per acre for those 4.6 acres. The viewers, myself, determine that these 7.7 acres should have that same $343 per acre of benefits into County Ditch 36 so that they will help pay future repair and maintenance on that system. So if this is approved and completed, that parcel, the Heinz property, would have 12.3 acres in County Ditch 36 and $4,217 of benefits in that system for future repair and maintenance of that system. I'm happy to answer. Any questions anyone might have?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just came.
Thank you, Mark. This time we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used up your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under the consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comment on County Ditch 36? Is there anyone wishing to give a comment to County Ditch 36 petition to an outlet additional lands? And for the last time, anyone wishing to make comments for County Ditch 36 petition to outlet additional lands? Hearing no comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any at this time, Mr. Chair.
I do not. I will move to accept the findings in order, in order that the petition to outlet additional lands into CD 36 be commanded by the Drainage Authority.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. And that passes. Our next ditch is County Ditch 56. Welcome to the final improvement hearing for County Ditch 56. Are there any changes to today's agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Being no changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to receive comments from all parties interested in the improvement of County Ditch 56. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer and viewers. We will then open the hearing for public comments. I will ask Blue Earth County's Drainage Staff, Craig Ostenson, to review the jurisdictional documents.
Okay. For jurisdictional documents, landowner information meeting was held on November 28th, 2023. Hearing notices were mailed on November 14th, 2023. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse. Notice of public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press for three consecutive weeks. This will, assuming that this is approved, there will be a resolution to financing. We'll be, I'll now read the, I'll read the memo and then followed up by the reading of the DNR Commissioner's Advisory Report. Blue Earth County Ditch 56 has 8,426 benefited acres, is located in the Garden City and Lincoln Townships. A petition for improvement was received on August 22nd, 2022. A petition for preliminary report was held on June 20th, 2023, where the Drainage Authority ordered Charles J. Brandl to make a detailed survey report and ordered the viewers to prepare a report on the benefits and damages. Mr. Brandl submitted the detailed survey report to the Property Environmental Resources Department of September 8th, 2023. The viewers submitted their report on September 28th, 2023. The DNR report was received on October 6th, 2023. The purpose of today's hearing is review the engineers' and viewers' report and to seek approval of the Drainage Authority for the proposed County Ditch 56 improvement petition by approving the proposed findings in order. Go on to the DNR letter. This is from the Department of Natural Resources, Division of Ecological and Water Resources, Region 4, addressed to Blue Earth County Drainage Authority. Thank you for the opportunity to review the proposed Blue Earth County Ditch 56 Branch 22 improvement project. We offer the comment the following Minnesota Statute 103E.301 on behalf of the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. In accordance with 103E.301, we find the detailed survey report is complete. Two, the detailed survey report will drain the affected property. Three, approves of the plan and recommendation, the County Ditch 56 outlets into Lake Crystal three miles downstream of Branch 22. To support efforts made by the Lake Crystal community to improve water quality in the lake, implementing best management practices in conjunction with proposed improvement is highly recommended. Please work with the Blue Earth County Soil and Water Conservation District to identify BMPs that will help reduce the increase of water and sediment leaving the system. The proposed project is of public utility with implementation of BMPs. As noted above, the implementation of BMPs is essential to help support efforts to improve Lake Crystal and safeguard the substantial financial investments that have been made in support of those efforts. Chapter 5 Best Management Practices of the Minnesota Public Drainage Manual is also a resource for identifying effective structural and non-structural BMPs. The soil survey is optional. Please send a copy of the response to comments and revised document meetings minutes, findings of fact, and any other order issued by the Drainage Authority regarding the proposed improvements to the DNR when available. Please submit these documents or any other questions about this letter to the regional drainage email at regionfourdrainage.dnr@thestateofminnesota. Regards, Todd Colander, EWR Southern District Manager. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Craig. Can I get a motion of second to accept the jurisdictional documents into the legal record?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. And that motion passes. I will now ask Chuck Brandl of ISG to please come up and review the engineer's report.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
So we're here for the final engineer's report for County Ditch 56 Branch 22. I have Jacob Mueller with me to put the report together. So we've gone through a little bit of the statute and why we're here. We're at the final hearing with, based on that, we look for landowner comments, but also is the project feasible, practical, cost-effective, and a necessity. Just a brief summary, the whole County Ditch 56 watershed is 9,300 acres. There's been a lot of work in this watershed. There's a lot of branches. Branch 22 is a small portion of that. It was constructed back in 1920. No major repairs, but there's been a lot of repairs on the open ditch. The open ditch gets cleaned on average, I think, every eight to 10 years. There's branches that have been replaced, and there's other projects going on in the watershed. So this portion of the watershed is only 200 acres, shown in purple on the screen here. It's currently a 15-inch tile outlet that is relatively steep and then drains into the ditch, but it drains a very flat area. The reason we're here is the system is failing. It's almost coming out of the ground. It's filled with sediment. We'll show that here in a second. And we looked at options with landowners to replace it versus improvement to gain adequate depth. The improvement option was chosen to drain this area. I'll give it over to Jacob here for...
Yeah, so as you can see, this is a zoomed-in view of the previous map. The Branch 22 watershed finds itself kind of in the center of the CD 56 watershed. The beginning of the Branch 22 tile starts as a 15-inch for a very short stretch and at a very, very steep grade. It very quickly next down to a 12-inch, subsequently a 10-inch, and then an 8, all at very, very flat grades. This was necessary at the time because the watershed in this area is very, very flat. Branch 22 lateral D extends to the south near the center of that line. As you can see here in this elevation map, white and red are the high points, light green and blue are the low points, with yellow being in the middle. This watershed is very, very uniform and very, very flat. It's essentially one large isolated basin. So with that, there was concerns of flooding affecting nearly the entire subwatershed.
One thing to note, the ditch spoils along the open ditch are higher than most of the land within this little watershed, so it's isolated. So when it rains, it sits in this basin. It doesn't even overflow into the ditch, hardly.
Yeah. And that was another thing we found during our modeling, is that the water leaving the system is either entirely infiltrated or leaves via tile-driven flow. Three measures were done to investigate the current condition of this system and the land around it. The first tile lines were exposed and invert elevations were shot. Some pictures were gained at this time to kind of gain an insight into what the existing tile looked like. We found at this time two different scenarios, one being the original concrete construction and the other being single-wall patch repairs that have been completed. Additionally, to gain insight into the entirety of the system, subsurface system, we televised the system, ISG televised the system. At that time, we found significant stretches of single-wall repairs which were failing, either plugged with sediment or deforming. Additionally, some of the original construction was found to have miscellaneous joints, fractured tile lines, and in some cases being almost entirely filled with sand and sediment. All of that combined led to our assessment that the tile had failed. All of that combined led to our assessment that the tile had failed and was no longer functional for the landowners. When we looked into capacity, uh, we learned that a lot of the system, this Branch 22 system is fairly inadequate. With the only portion exceeding, uh, the half-inch-per-day drainage standard being the very outlet. The remainder immediately next down to a .08, which is only about 16% of recommended values. Combined with the fact that it wasn't deep enough into the ground to have adequate cover was the majority of the reason that we, we elected for improvement. With that in mind, the proposed design bears a few things in mind. We seek to be a bit deeper than the existing tile, exhibit at least five feet of cover, adequate depth to reduce compaction damages. Additionally, we look for a half-inch-per-day drainage coefficient throughout the entire design system. Adequate out, adequacy of outlet. We don't want to incur any adverse effects to downstream infrastructure. And finally, we look at alternative BMPs or best management practices. Um, additional to that, we look at benefits and environmental considerations. So looking at our proposed design, um, we follow the same general course of the original alignment, as you can see on the map. Where originally it was starting as a 15-inch, we're going to start at an 18, necking down to a 15, and finally a 10. Branch 22 lateral D1 will also be an eight-inch where it previously was an eight-inch.
Just installed at a, at a deeper elevation.
Yep. So instead of coming up at a really steep grade at the outlet, we're just flattening that out to get more adequate cover. As you can see in this table, uh, the proposed design would achieve a half-inch-per-day drainage coefficient throughout its entirety with the exception of Branch 22 lateral D, which would be more closely ma, matching the existing capacity in the ground. Here we have a planned profile of the proposed system. Um, as you can see towards, this is the terminating end of Branch 22, the farthest southwest portion. The existing line was not exhibiting adequate cover, as we had discussed, about three and a half feet. By slightly modifying grades, we can get to that five feet of cover and create a tile line with a lot more longevity.
So we looked at project cost, um, and this is a, when we were preliminary looking at the project, the cost of repair versus the cost to improve. The repair really wasn't an option because of the, the shallow depths. So the improvement was chosen. There's only a $30,000 difference between, or $29,000 difference between those. When the viewers and the, the viewers will give their report, um, they have a benefits of 46,000. Thus, this project does have a net benefit of 18,000. Again, this is a small project when you look at, at drainage projects. Um, so because the system has failed, um, the petition included separable maintenance, so we're asking for separable maintenance to be applied to the project. And as you saw by the pictures, it's very obvious that the system is out of repair. It's not functioning. We did put together a hydraulic model, and this is required, um, as part of the environmental considerations in the project. Here's some maps, just looking at as constructed. Uh, this is assuming that the system was working. It's not, it's not working versus, um, if it, uh, with the improvement. Most of the areas that were flooding go below that two days of flooding on a 10-year event. Thus, it's an adequate drainage for this area. It's not a big increase, but it's enough to make this from, from, uh, more farmable, and that's where you get the benefit. But really, we're replacing a, a system that's broken, so. Um, as you can see by this picture, um, the saturation levels, uh, in some of the aerial photos, you can see that the system really isn't working, and this is where we have those problems. You can almost, you can see it in the aerial photo, so. Um, we did look at how does this affect County Ditch 56. The changes within the, the watershed were approximately six to 10 cubic feet per second. That's a high percentage when you just look at that small area. Um, so based on all the work we've done on County Ditch 56, we have capacities previously completed for all of the crossings. And, um, looked at the percentage of increase to the ditch and will that raise water levels? Will that have a negative effect? When you look at the open ditch mainline, it's less than 1%, down to a half percent on the 50-year event. Um, thus, in our opinion, the outlet is adequate. This will not cause additional erosion or harm downstream. I'm going to skip over construction practices. Um, I can answer questions of landowners if need be. We did do a multi-purpose drainage management plan, and this has been done a couple times on, on all of County Ditch 56. Looking at alternative, uh, practices. Uh, storage in this small portion of the watershed, because it's so flat, is not really effective. You'd almost have to make a wetland out of the whole area. Um, so, um, no storage options were chosen. But as with all of our projects, we use alternative intakes, either a hickin bottom or intakes that we manually cut holes in and raise up above, so we keep sediment out of the system. Here's the multi-purpose drainage management plan for the whole system. There were comments from the DNR about looking at, uh, alternative practices and BMPs. This is being done in other parts of the watershed. Um, there's a proposal that the SWCD is currently, uh, working with us and landowners on for storage further downstream. And then there's portions of the watershed that U.S. Fish and Wildlife is purchasing and, and doing restoration. So that work is being done within the watershed. It's just not really feasible in that 200-acre area except for controlling intakes. So as, as shown, um, the system is in disrepair, needs to be replaced. Uh, to gain adequate depth, uh, a larger tile can be run at a flatter grade. Thus, the improvement, um, it's our opinion, the project's cost-effective, practical, feasible, and the outlet is found to be adequate. And, uh, we'd recommend approval of the project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for ISG? No, thank you very much. I will now ask Mr. Dan Ruby to please come up and review the viewer's report.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not Dan Ruby, but I will, I will do the honors.
Well, we'll let you do it. Please introduce yourself then.
Uh, my name is Ron Rinquist. I was the lead viewer on the original redetermination of, uh, Ditch 56, which was done a few years ago. I was unable to make the informational meeting. That's why Dan covered for that one.
We'll take you then. How's that?
Okay, so what we've done is, after being appointed to determine the benefits of this improvement, we did look at the system as a whole and said, there's over, overall part, part or all of 25 different sections affected by Ditch 56 are benefited. And although the, the value, the market values aren't exactly the same, this has such a minimal impact to such few properties, we didn't feel that there was a need for recommending updating the values for the balance of the ditch systems. So we looked at the acres that were drained within this sub watershed. Uh, we came up with, there are 234 acres that we felt were benefited within this sub watershed. We took the original delineation or determination of benefited acres from the original viewer's report. We did split them for the sub watershed so that not all acres are benefited on all of the parcels. This affects only five different parcels. And when we did the original viewer's report, we left dollars out there because these tile branches were not adequately sized to meet the engineer's recommended capacity. So there was an adjustment within that redetermination to leave dollars for the need for future improvements to be paid for. So we did apply them. The, uh, benefit values start at a smaller percentage, the closer you are to the open ditch itself. And then they increase in, uh, remaining values because of the cost of getting water to that open ditch from further away. We determined that the benefit proximity adjustment was from 1% to those properties adjacent to the ditch, up to a maximum of 18 for those properties the furthest away from the ditch itself. With that, we came up with a net benefit of $46,679.30 and compared like, uh, Mr. Brandl's report to the $29,100 of estimated improvement cost. In the report that was submitted, we did not include damages because we felt, and it was our understanding, that the damages would be the same during repair or improvement because they're paralleling the lines, so there isn't really any difference. Uh, we did pre, prepare a report that does now include a recommended damages for the, uh, temporary right-of-way required for this construction. But that is up to the board to determine whether that's a improvement cost or a separable maintenance cost. Our recommended damages were at $700 per acre or seven, $7,371. There were no changes to any of the roads, so there were no road benefits included in, within the improvement.
Thank you. Any questions?
At this point?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit. County Administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used up your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive, are not relevant, relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on the County Ditch 56 improvement? Is there anyone wishing to make comments on the County Ditch 56 improvement? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to make comments on the County Ditch 56 improvement? Hearing no comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to accept the drafted findings in order approving the viewer's report for the improvement benefits and the engineer's detailed, uh, report?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Any questions?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? That passes. Our next action is to approve the resolution to financing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the resolution to financing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This seems like the repeat of what we did last week.
Yeah.
It's the same time. I was going to say that. It's the same, it's the same type of...
Same stuff, Chuck.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. Have a good Christmas.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to wait a few minutes to get everybody out of here anyway.
Yep, see ya.
If you could bring your discussion out into the hallway, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment, and comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive, are not relevant to the matter under consideration of the board. I'll ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the item before the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm George Leary with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning.
Morning, George.
Hi, George.
The one item we have is PC 30-23 is from Thomas and Sharon Dowk and the United Pentecostal Church. It is a request for review and approval of the preliminary and final plat of Dowk Rural Development Number 2. It's a plat consisting of one lot and two outlots. The properties are owned agricultural and are also in the urban fringe overlay district of the city of Eagle Lake. The property includes Lot 2, Block 1 of the Dowk Rural Development, and parts of the southwest quarter, of the northwest quarter, and of the northwest quarter, of the northwest quarter of Section 17, Luray Township. Staff presented the report. That was present. There was no comment from the public. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 30-23, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC 30-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment to PC 30-23? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 30-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board?
Nope. I would make a recommendation to, to pass the, the resolution based on the recommendation by the planning commission.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? And the motion carries, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, George.
George, yeah.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, the next thing is the Sheriff's Department.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
How are you, Chairman?
Uh, I've got three things, and I was told they're all to be individual, which is fine. Um, the first one is the fee schedule. I, uh, in going over the fee schedule, there was a, a few that, um, we haven't raised in years. Um, with the wages going up and fuel going up and everything else going up, I looked at it and I, and I surveyed the 5th District. Um, and we're trying to stay in line with the other sheriff, uh, sheriffs in the 5th District, so one isn't real low and one isn't real high. Um, one of the ones is, um, inmate housing. Um, the 5th District agreed, we're going to go to $75 for out-of-county inmate housing. The off-duty detail, I raised from 80 to 90. I was going to go higher, but Mr. Clausen and I came to, uh, to compromise. And then, um, civil process was a big one. I raised pretty much every one of the, um, civil processes, um, just because, again, it hadn't been raised in a long time. When we look at the price of wages and fuel going up, uh, just makes sense, so. Any other questions other than that?
I'll move the fee schedule.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion?
No discussion, but just thank you for updating those and it's always hard to go through those and figure out what to charge, so, thank you.
Keep Bob happy.
Big part of it here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Thank you very much. All right.
Uh, the second, I'm requesting the board approval of the amendment to the contract with, um, the provider for the jail meals. Um, it looks like a 6% increase, um, across the board.
I'll move approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
We've had really good service from these, this group, haven't we?
And 6% seems really reasonable for the price of everything that's been going up with wages and, and costs for food and everything. That seems pretty reasonable.
And Sheriff, could you refresh my memory? We're doing most of that in-house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then we even sub some meals out yet, or we don't do that anymore?
I know we were doing Nooklet County for a while. I'm not sure if we still have it.
That's all right. I just was making sure we're still using our kitchen.
We are, yep. Um, the worker from the company and then, um, inmate workers.
Perfect. Thank you. We don't talk about that enough.
Any, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same? Thank you very much. That passes.
All right, thank you. The third would be the, uh, emergency management was awarded a 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant, uh, an amount of $41,328 with a, um, $41,328 match requirement. And the, this grant, um, goes towards wages for the emergency management department.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Second.
A motion of a second. Any discussion? Other than, anytime you can get a grant like that, that's a good thing.
Correct.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same? That passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sheriff.
All right. And John? Community corrections.
Good morning.
Morning, John. John.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
All right, I've got a few items for you guys this morning. Uh, the first being a contract, uh, bed agreement with Prairie Lakes Youth Programs. So accompanying this memo is a contract agreement with Prairie Lakes, uh, Youth Programs for one secure bed day at their program in Wilbur. Uh, the agreement will secure a bed at their detention and secure corrections unit for calendar year 2024. The per diem would be $376 a day. Uh, this is about a $10 a day increase from last year. Uh, the total amount, the minimum total amount for this contract would be $137,240. Um, it does secure one bed per day. I would say though, for last year or this year right now, uh, we have used over 500 bed days. And so we are definitely utilizing, uh, the program over there for these purposes. Uh, they also operate a, uh, non-secure program and group home, which having this contract does allow us some uh, ability to get into those programs as well. So some, uh, you know, uh, benefits included with, uh, receiving a reduced rate with this contract. Um, like I said, we've used over 500 bed days so far in 2023 and I would anticipate that we would, uh, probably be around that same amount for next year, but any unused bed days would be split between community corrections and human services. Um, and I would just respectfully request that we approve the contracted bed agreement between Prairie Lakes and Blue Earth County.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion of a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same? That passes. So Carver County.
Carver County, onto the next one. All right. So this is a contracted bed agreement between, uh, Blue Earth County, Carver County, and also we share this contract with Nicollet County as well. Um, so this, um, excuse me, uh, accompanying this memo is a contract between Carver County ourselves and Nicollet County. Uh, the agreement would secure one bed per day in detention at the Carver County. It's located at their jail, uh, for calendar year 2024. Uh, the per diem would be $120 a day. Uh, this is no increase. This is the same rate we paid this year. Um, that total amount, minimum total amount would be $43,800. Uh, like I said, this is a shared agreement also with Nicollet County as well. Uh, in 2023, we've used, uh, just over 250, uh, bed days there, so we haven't gotten to, we haven't gotten to that 365 mark, but we are still receiving a significant benefit by having the ability to utilize the Carver County Juvenile Detention Center. We've had over 30 intakes, uh, for juveniles that go up there and it is typically our first, uh, stop or first place to call when we do need a secure bed for a juvenile. Um, and so we do use, they are the closest, um, for us to be able to have a deputy go up there. It is the easiest transport for our deputies to go up there. Um, and I would just respectfully request that the, uh, board approve the contracted bed agreement between Blue Earth and Carver County.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion of a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? That passes. And then we go to the advisory board appointments.
Yes, so, uh, with the advisory board appointments, uh, this is for, um, a term of January 1, 2024 until December 31 of 2025. Uh, I do need, make a couple corrections because, uh, district, um, lines, um, so Commissioner District One listed for Tamara Hanson, that should be Commissioner District Four. And then for Kerry Robb, that should be, uh, Commissioner District Two. So I apologize for that. Um, with, uh, also I had a couple people recently just drop off, uh, Habibah Rashid, uh, from Council of Churches actually is leaving her position, um, so I'm losing that citizen member. I'm also losing my student member as well, so I'm looking to actually be having to fill some vacancies for, uh, Commissioner Districts 1, 3, 5, and then also with a student member as well. So we'll be looking to fill those positions. Um, otherwise, I would just respectfully request that, uh, this, uh, my advisory board membership be approved for the next two years.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion of a second. Any discussion? This is one of my policy committees. I, uh, really appreciate this. I, uh, I know how much work they do and, and, uh, you, you pull in those meetings and they're really educational and, and you find out what's going on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good Christmas.
And we will jump to human services. Mr. Clausen.
Morning, Phil. Mr. Chair, I might take the liberty here, if you'd allow it, just to comment on John's piece about beds. Our bed situation really has not improved, um, both on the adult side and the kid side, especially for that more emergent placement. And so we have struggled, um, really on a weekly basis. We have four children placed out of state, which is very common throughout the region. Um, unheard of in my tenure that we've ever had to do this. So that's really not improving. We do have some efforts underway. Um, nothing specific I can offer at this time about looking at crisis, uh, uh, um, solutions. And I think there's a couple vendors out there that might have some interest on a regional basis. And Nicollet County is chairing a subcommittee to look at the children's mental health side and will probably issue a request for information just to see who's out there if they're interested in this. We don't have that written yet either, so I just wanted to update the board on that, that it is in the works. Um, I think we're desperate for that. John and I were talking out in the hall because, yeah, they always happen on a Friday afternoon and we have no place. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As far as action items, I have a bunch, end of year stuff, so I will try to move through them quickly. I will say, most of them are straightforward with a couple of exceptions, so I will highlight the rough spots. The waivered services, all pretty straightforward. The EASE contract is the first item, um, with MRCI and this is for day support services. Um, individuals who need training and support to maintain daily life skills. Uh, the rate is determined by DHS through a rate management system and the term is January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '25. A similar contract for extended employment, MRCI, providing help with individuals who have disabilities to maintain paid employment in an integrated setting in the community. The 2024 rate per month is $178.55. It is a two-year contract and the second year, 182.12 for '25, representing a 2% annual increase from the previous contract and the term, January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '25. And finally, under this section is WS Transportation. Um, the, this transport service, um, helps people who are on the waivers, um, access essential shopping, employment, community activities. The expenses are reimbursed back to us, so there's no net cost to the county from the state. There's a graduated scale based on mileage. For example, at the low end, zero to five miles is $17.50 and at the higher end, uh, 46 to 50 miles is $76, just to give the board some sense of how much it costs. And the term, January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '25. Uh, supportive housing section is also, I think, familiar to the board, although there's always that, um, three-way contract that we do here. So the first of those is Hearth Connection Provider Agreement, um, where we engage Hearth, um, who provides, uh, supportive housing, um, through Long Term Homeless, um, Grant. Term, I'm sorry, the contract terms are in this agreement and the annual provider budget, which you'll see a listing of the three different timeframes, including the most current, 24 to 25 at $812,039, which is a 5% reduction. There were some legacy funds that were put into this pool of resource that no longer are available. And so that term, January 1st of '24 through December, uh, 31st of '25. And then a similar contract, um, where Blue Earth County continues as a fiscal host to the Southern Regional Project. This includes 20 counties in the southern, um, part of Minnesota and we have $10,000 that we retain for the administrative fee. The term of this contract is, uh, from January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '25. The amount, um, $2.4 million for the two-year period. It's flat over the term, so the second year has no new dollars or cost, cost of living adjustment in that. And finally, the Hearth Comprehensive Housing Contract with a contract back with us for rental assistance. Um, our, um, information system and support sys, um, support services, and you'll see that broken out in specific lines for a total of $177,306. This is a 28% increase over the previous, um, contract, um, specific to some of the HUD funding that's included in this. On June 1st, '23, and now will continue to May 31st of '24 under this addition. Public Health is next section. And the first one is, um, funding for COVID-19 response. Uh, you'll see in the narrative that it really is about vaccine-related activities, so direct vaccine efforts, um, recovery mitigation, education and, um, support of community providers, um, in a partnership role. There's no change in the funding terms, which is at $915,191 and the amendment is really to extend the date to March 31st of 2026. And this next one is IQIP, which is a new acronym for us. It is our IMTRAC registry, which I think the board's familiar with. Um, each kind of region has its own registry and ours is called IMTRAC in our six counties. The shift here is that MDH will now be managing reminders for vacs, vaccines to all the Minnesota residents, which should streamline the outreach and also standardize an ability for us to see what kind of net effect we get out of those efforts. So, um, it'll be a similar way across the state, which should improve some of the metrics. Um, there will be a decrease, a corresponding decrease in funding from 40, almost $45,000 to $25,000. Um, the term is January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '24. And as I'll explain in this next bullet, um, it's not difficult for us in the public health world to move hours of staff around, so that's how that will be handled in that regard. And this next one shows the other side of that. And when I said there's a couple of sketchy areas, here's one. So we have a grant that's out there called Response Sustainable Grant. It's new and you'll see, I'll jump to the bottom. It's $117,269 would be our allocation. The state has not provided us anything other than the categories listed here. It will be workforce capacity, sustainability, health equity and communication. We don't know what that means and there is a .5 position that we have to dedicate to this purpose to get the $171,000. There's no time and the clock's ticking. It's only till next year, June. And this is happening in two big areas here. MDH has always been this way, um, not just specific to the Department of Health, but the DH has part of public health also, um, where we often don't have a lot of time to decide or come up with a plan. And the other area that's not part of our action items is adult mental health, where our grant funding. We had an extension of our mobile crisis response and, um, we were to plan and it was a big chunk of money and at the end, DH just said, oh, we used it for other purposes. And so we had all our plans planned and they just said, no, we'd use it elsewhere. So this is common. I mean, Bob and I have talked about it in these two areas. I bring it to the board because how we, like, would recommend to you all is that we move ahead and try to capture this. Staff are very willing to do that. It is a scramble. And the alternative is to just say, no, thank you. We don't want the $171. And I, to be honest, for the workload, it would be easier for us, but, you know, our staff are about the mission, so we'd prefer to have you say yes. Um, but that's, those are the terms. That's the situation. It's, it's not great and, um, that one, you know, we'll have to look at. I do write in there that what, I think the best we can do is once we have the terms of what we need to do is to run it through Bob and hopefully communicate it to you all, what our final plan is. Um, it's just impossible to do that without any guidance. And we check this.
Yes.
So when you say a work plan, is it a work plan we already have or is this something you're building new or is it gonna?
So what we don't have, Commissioner, is a sense of what staff or what per, like, what would they do, the duties? And so in that way, when we look at it in practical terms, in operational terms, who's gonna do what? We, we can't answer it. We're just, we're just stuck on the fence right now. And so they sit out there and say it's these categories, but we have lots of pieces of public health and we could rob Peter to pay Paul. We could, you know, do a lot of things. We do it all the time. It's kind of a weekly activity in public health. But, um, we, we can't answer your fair question, which is who would do what? And for us to guess at it, it just feels like a really arbitrary way to guess at it because I, I don't know what they're gonna target as far as which staff and what they're doing now. And I think our purpose is we would try to dedicate the half FTE plus to this purpose and we'd rob it from someplace or push it to others. The previous one about IMTRAC, when we have a little, um, you know, gap there in moving staff around, um, Kelly especially has done this for years and years, so she's good at it. It's just a really hard business practice, to be honest, so.
Well, that's what I think I struggle with. You know, we get $117,000, which is still tax money.
Right.
At the end of the day. It's all tax money. And, and you stick a half-time person or three-quarter time.
Right.
It's already busy doing other things and stuff we know what we're doing and wanna do to make a plan that we're really not sure what we're gonna do.
Right.
And again, it's just, it's just back to the, let's study, let's look at it, spend tons of money on it, but not do anything on the ground.
Right.
So that's where I give a roll.
Where I'd be from my chair, just to let you know how I think this would go and why I'm recommending that we move forward and, and try to bet on the com is that we would say, I would only trade for something better, Commissioner. So in other words, we're doing stuff now, our footprint is what it is and people are being used at capacity. There, the one exception might be this cut in IMTRAC that the state took something over, so we have a little wiggle room there. Um, how do we shift everybody around? If we can't come up with a better plan, that would be our recommendation to Bob. We'd say, we, we don't think we should take the money. But right now, I can't even answer that to you. And I'd rather try than not try is probably the only decision point for the board.
Well, I can get that and I appreciate you, you know, so you get the grant approved by us today, but it's not necessarily gonna do all the work to get something that ain't worth it to us at the end of the day.
Right. I promise you that. I promise you that we're not gonna trade for something worse than what we have now.
I just, I just, I get a little frustrated, not that I'm an expert in this field.
Right.
I'm certainly not, but just to have you study something such you end up with more work.
Right.
And more services that we'll have to provide with county taxpayers' money and not state taxpayer money.
Yeah, if we do it at all. And that's, Plan B is to not do it. Um, the reason I threw out the, and the adult mental health side is it's the exact same thing. And what happened is we did all the planning that you're talking about and we had this very, I mean, went to Horizon Homes, had all this planning for staff houses and they pulled the plug on the money. And so we did do all that admin time without any return on that investment, which is also taxpayer dollars, all of our time put into that. So it's really, uh, a waste of churn and it's about timing. The variable that is broken is that we don't have enough time to plan, because you should be planful.
Sure.
And then implement. And we just, we're just, in these two areas, it's been really a nightmare this whole, since COVID hit. It's just been very chaotic, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the next section is community programming. Make sure I'm on the right page. Yep. And detox. And, uh, the first one is transportation, much like what the sheriff brought forward today. Um, the city of Mankato, um, also provides detox transportation. Um, and they did, much like our sheriff did, is looked at the costs and there was a 4% increase in their staffing costs from 93, 98 per hour to $97.74 per hour. Um, the mileage will also be added to that, which has been the historical practice at the IRS rate and the term, January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '24. The next, um, the next item is also one that I flagged as a concern and, um, it's Central Minnesota Mental Health Center who does provide detox. And I've brought, I think, three other detox contracts forward. This would be fourth in line. And so it really is just a backup to the backup to the backup to the backup. And we, we do feel we need it. Um, this facility is out of Wait Park, um, but it would be only used once brown counties will, and, and to be honest, they're at the end of the pecking order, but we do feel it's wise for us to have backup because again, things happen where if all the detoxes are full, we need someplace, law enforcement needs someplace to take these people. are full, we need someplace, law enforcement needs someplace to take these people. The out-of-county rate, which is the red flag, is a thousand dollars per day, Brown County's four hundred and seventy-one dollars a day, just for a comp, and if we don't contract with them, it's, um, twelve hundred dollars a day, um, so.
What's the contract cost for the?
We don't, we, this one, we don't, some of those, we've had a retainer, there's no-
You don't have to sign a contract, it's just that you have to have your name on that list.
So we, we would need the board's approval to say we want to be seen as kind of a member county, but there is no cost. Some of those, very good question, do have kind of a retainer fee, this one does not. So it's just saying that we wanna be named as a member county, an ancillary member, member county, and we save the two hundred dollars per diem if we use it, but there's no minimum to this one.
Still a thousand dollars a day.
Oh, I hope we would never, never use it, Commissioner, for sure. And-
Have we ever gotten to a, like, a fourth tier?
You know, we used to, uh, it's just my history is homecoming used to be the time that law enforcement would kind, you maybe know more about this than I do, but, um, but would do, you know, kind of major catchments of people that are intoxicated, and so that would fill up everything, and yes, we'd spill over, and I remember at that time, that's why we went even four deep at those times, because we ran out of beds. I don't think we've hit this fourth tier, I would, I would recommend to the board that, or prognostic, prognosticate to the board that we won't use it.
And does the, uh, the subject that's being sent to detox, do they pay for any of it?
So that, we do intakes on all of them, some managed cares pay a little, it's not a very great return in any regard. If you're into, it is a sliding fee, so if you have resources, you will be billed personally, and some do pay, it's, it's true, it's just not a very good return, and most don't have anything.
And most students, if that's the case, don't have any money.
Right, so it would probably be more about insurance, if they'd happen to have an insurance policy that has detox in the policy, which some do.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, and then just to mention that if we hold people, it's even more, um, and I just do this as a comp of where things are going, but fifteen hundred dollars a day if we hold them past a seventy-two-hour window. And again, my intention from my chair would be that we not use this contract, but it is an insurance policy of sorts as a place to go. The fifty to sixty percent increase is also worth a note to the board, and that concerns me if that's a trend line, um, when, uh, again, detox is just not a very attractive business to get into, I guess I'll say that. Uh, term of the agreement, January first of twenty-four through December thirty-first of twenty-four, maybe I already said that. Um, disability services, this, um, I have historically grouped up, because there's a number of contracts, they're all individualized contracts, but for the purpose of our time here, to group them together, um, has been efficient, and so for twenty-four and twenty-five, you see the listing of the eight providers, which I will not read through. Um, they all provide professional guardianship services, which is a, a mandatory statutory responsibility for Blue River County for vulnerable adults. Um, they all represent approximately a two percent increase for this extension. Um, some providers, two, um, provide conservatorship as well, which is a fiscal side of that. So if somebody has a complicated situation with their finan, financial picture, they also have to do fiduciary kind of responsibilities, and that's why there's kind of two tiers. I put down the rage, range of kind of the level-one guardianship, only is fifty to fifty-two dollars per hour per provider, and then the, the guardianship with conservatorship, sixty to sixty-one dollars, so pretty tight grouping with those contracts, and the board was provided a matrix of, of how those all break out, specific to each vendor. Last section is administration, and the first item there, I hope is familiar to the board, I was not at the work session, but I know we reviewed this document, there have been no substantial changes since that meeting we had with the board, um, to kind of update language according to statute for social services task force and the mental health task force. This is the final proposal, um, for those operating guidelines, um, for all of our advisory committees, and the documentation, uh, the document, I'm sorry, provides the definition, purpose, and functions of these committees, so we are asking for formal adoption of that at this time. And then finally, much like, um, John Marsalick's, um, list, we have our human services advisory list. The same issue came to our attention about, um, district, redistricting, and I think we suffer that same fate, that some of these, um, folks that are volunteering to be on our committee have very possibly moved districts. Noel is out on vacation this week, so that means the whole machine stops until she's back, but we will give that a hard look and make sure we get this right, um, and compare that. I'm guessing maybe even some of the people that apply don't know, um, if there was a shift, some do, some don't, so we're gonna, we're gonna go through each one and make sure we're accurate and make those changes. And I, I can bring back next month, um, just to correct those for the record, to the changes that we do have. The attachments, uh, guardianship rates is the first one, talked about that. The, um, whole guideline for advisory committees is the next attachment. Uh, the listing of the proposed appointments for our advisory committees is the next, um, attachment, you'll see those broken into the new appointments and reappointments, and then the final graph is just for the board's purposes, to see where the vacancies are. That could also shift once we figure out if our accuracy is right with regard to which district people reside in. Those are my action items for this month, Mr. Chair.
All right. Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval of the action items.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? An awful lot to go over this morning.
Yes, sir.
Um, actually shows you the cost of county government.
Yeah.
You know, which is, people wonder what we spend our money on, this is-
Right, a lot of churn.
Is taking care of people.
Yes, sir.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
Happy holidays, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, please. All right, and we jump to administration, Bob?
Oh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is county board minutes for December twelfth.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the county board amendment, minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, the same. That passes.
Next are the bills for the week of December seventh through the thirteenth.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to, uh, approve the bills. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number fourteen in your pack, it is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have two action items for, uh, the board's consideration today. I will cover the first one, and I'll ask our HR Director, Laura Elbok, to, uh, present the second item. So the first item is authorization for the county board chair and county administrator to sign an agreement with law enforcement, labor services, local four forty, which is our command staff, lieutenants and chief bailiff are included in this new bargaining group, uh, that we just have begun negotiations with, uh, starting in twenty-twenty-three. And so, um, we have reached a tentative agreement on a three-year agreement covering two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-five. Uh, we did use the sheriff's deputy existing collective bargaining agreement as a template, uh, which helps with administrative, uh, ease and consistency, and so, uh, much of the provisions are, uh, similar to what we currently have in the deputy contract. Um, you know, one of the major components is figuring out, uh, wages and benefits. In this agreement, we have the same, um, transitional language from our old, uh, decision band methodology system to the, uh, job evaluation, um, system or the JET system, and so for two thousand twenty-three, that includes the dollar fifty and placement on the new scale, and then we've negotiated a three and a quarter percent increase each of two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. Since this is a new agreement with a, a new group, um, there are a few unique components or articles of this, a particular contract. Um, one is related to the promotion language, since, um, this is a supervisory type of role. We had a language both from a promotion standpoint, uh, internal promotion, as well as hiring from external purposes, and so had some unique language there. Uh, with some, uh, unique language in some respects regarding chief bailiff overtime, that's more of a traditional eight-to-five sort of role, whereas, um, the other positions in this bargaining group are twenty-four, seven, and so we needed to separate those a little bit. And then there's some on-call language, uh, to cover some of the overnight period where lieutenant might not be on duty, uh, all the hours, and so, um, pretty straightforward contract at the end of the day, and we're happy to have reached this tentative agreement and bringing it forward today for the board's consideration.
I would move approval of the contract.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes.
Could now ask Laura Elbok to comment, present some information about a change to the employee handbook regarding earned sick and safe time policy.
Good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
Good morning, Laura.
So you all maybe like, you all likely have maybe heard about the earned sick and safe time law. This is something that is new in Minnesota, it was passed with this most recent legislative session, and has been getting quite a bit of conversation in the media, as well as with employers and employees. And so just to give a, a brief overview of it, um, effective on January first of two thousand twenty-four, Minnesota's earned sick and safe time law requires employers to provide paid leave to employees who work in the state. An employee is anyone who works at least eighty hours in a year for an employer in Minnesota, um, but does not include independent contractors. So in our case, um, this would also include temporary and part-time employees, um, would now be covered under this law. The, um, the law does require that, or does state that a paid time off or other type of paid leave, including sick and vacation leave, can satisfy the E S S T requirements. Um, nothing prohibits from, an employer from providing more generous leave benefit, leave policies than the minimum required. So I think that's important to remember, this is kind of the minimum that, that we're being required to, to comply with. Uh, the employees, the employer's policy that's presented is in compliance with the E S S T statute. Um, it was informed by Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry E S S T webinars, and they also have frequently asked questions in addition to other E S S T trainings. We, Lewis County has decided that we will be using our existing paid leave benefits to demonstrate our compliance with E S S T, and in that case would be our sick and vacation leave policies. We gave consi, uh, substantial consideration to our approach to cross-designate paid leave in the form of the sick and vacation leave as E S S T, and determine this approach is consistent with the guidance offered. So, um, essentially what that means is that we are going to be designating the first forty-eight hours as provided in the law of sick and/or vacation leave used as E S S T. Because we're more generous, there's, they'll also have additional leave likely available once they have used up that leave, it just would not be designated as E S S T at that time, and would just be, follow our regular, uh, already adopted and approved sick and vacation leave policies. Um, it is important to note that the E S S T is, is likely an area that will evolve with time following the January first, twenty-twenty-four effective date, and eventual potential rulemaking by the Department of Labor and Industry. We've seen that, um, since the law was passed, that, uh, Department of Labor has been providing frequently asked questions, has been providing notices, all of that type of stuff to employers, but as they're trying to sort out what this law is and means and how it's to be applied, um, they've been providing frequently asked questions and updates. Um, the most recent one was December fourth, and so this is, like I said, it's consistently changing, um, and we are doing our best to, to, um, monitor those developments and make sure our policy continues to meet those statutory requirements. So hopefully, I won't have to come back, but again, there is a likelihood, depending on if there are changes in interpretations and such, um, we would want to comply with that. The county will be providing notice via this policy in our employee handbook, um, an employee notice and workplace posters as are required by the law, so we will make sure that all of the employees are aware of this, um, and how this will interact with our current policies. Um, with that, if there's any questions.
I'm glad you got a handle on it.
Yeah. So at the end of the day, it's a lot of work for basically nothing that's gonna change inside of our organization.
That's correct.
Thank you.
There, there will be a couple, some of them, the changes would be, um, currently many of our contracts require at least thirty days or six months until you can use sick leave.
Oh.
The way this law works, as soon as you accrue the leave, you can use it.
Okay.
So it will open up the, the employee's ability to utilize that sick leave. Um, it also has some very specific instructions and requirements as far as how soon we can require notification from employees that they're going to be out of the office, and what type of documentation we can provide. So those are, are the, the changes. Uh, probably the biggest is that it's employees, once they've worked eighty hours, and so we do have some seasonal employees, we have some temporary employees, we have election judges, um, we've got interns that we'll be evaluating as we bring them on to assure that we are complying with this, as that will be an additional bank of time that they will now have accessible to them if they meet that eighty-hour threshold.
Okay.
So if there are manpower staff, then manpower takes-
Correct, yep, this is just simply for the employees, that we are the employer, listed as the employer.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the seasonal staff in our public works department are probably gonna be one of our bigger groups that will be impacted by this new law that we historically have not had a benefit package attached to.
They'll get a little something.
Yep, yeah, and the accrual, uh, the minimum accrual is one hour for every thirty hours worked, so that is what they'll be accruing on. Obviously, if you look at our sick and vacation leave policies for all other employees, we, employees accrue well more than one hour for every thirty hours worked.
Okay. Yes?
So how will we be affected, uh, um, notification from the employee to, to us, um, on those, on those, depending on that timeline, on those time-specific things, whether it's snow plowing, deputies on the road, will, will that be any effect?
Um, so that, that is one area that I think will be, there'll be some additional discussion on, um, as there, as, as of the way the writ, the law is written right now, there are, there's nothing in place to say that we can decline or deny somebody if, from using that leave, um, and doesn't make, carve out any exceptions, um, for highway workers, um, our deputies, our dispatchers. So theoretically, because school closures is also included in this, theoretically, we could have a situation in which a unit or a large group of employees would be out for a school closure, and we really would not have the ability to have any enforcement over that. Um, the, the one carve-out that we have found potentially is, um, the, the Department of Corrections and the statute for jail staffing does have, right, in the statute, specific minimum staffing levels, and so that is a place that we believe we could have, have some say over that, but otherwise, no, you could have a school situation, and all of the deputies would be out. I think that's extremely unlikely, so, um, but that is something that's been noticed and is a concern.
Thank you.
And they can carry this time if they don't need to?
Yeah, so there's several different ways with this law that you can earn the time. Um, we have elected an accrual method, and so they will accrue it with each pay period, and by electing that method, employees will earn up to forty-eight hours in a year, but have the ability to carry- but have the ability to carry over up to 80 hours. So this first year, like the employee, for 2024, employees are just going to earn the 48. But then when you go into 2025, if they have that 48, it would carry over. And then they would continue to accrue until they would get to 80 hours.
You mentioned election jud, election judges, and you said, so like for employees that are in the county that are election judges, that are, you know, for the day or a couple of days, whatever it is.
Yep, those, those hours worked would, would count. Um, but again, those employees are more than likely already accruing way more than that. And, um, you know, more than likely will have already earned their 48 hours by the time an election period would come around. Um, but like election judges that we may be hiring or bringing in as temporary staff, um, those are, those are employees that we would need to evaluate. Okay, are we going to be expecting them to work 80 hours or how would that work?
Okay. Not to get too deep into the weeds, so what if they do work more than 80 hours? Do you pay them back? They can't take a day off of work because they're sick.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, so if they do work 80 hours and then they're eligible for it, we do have to go and apply it. But, um, yeah, there, there wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to necessarily use it.
So that just lays there then till they come back or what happens to it?
No, it, it does not cash out.
Does not cash out.
It does not, by the, by the way, so they would lose it. But there is a caveat in the law. If we bring back an employee within 180 days from their separation, we would have to reinstate that. So for example, if we'd have an election in November and an employee wouldn't use it, and then we'd have, you know, February special election, we call in those same employees and they make it to 80 hours. They would get that, up that time reinstated.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Time is clear. I'm looking for a motion for approval.
So moved.
A second? Can you remember who's second?
I'll second it.
All right. This is, this is of course interesting. We're approving something, but that by state law we have to do.
Yes.
Um. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, back to informational.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the informational items I'll just run through real quickly. We did have a promotion of an investigator to a lieutenant in our sheriff's office. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that investigator. We also had a promotion of a deputy sheriff to the investigator, uh, position. So, uh, trickle-down effect was, uh, needing to initiate recruitment to refill the deputy. We had a change of employment status from a temporary deputy sheriff to the deputy sheriff. So another part of that trickle-down effect. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill the temporary deputy sheriff. That particular position is under a grant-funded status, and that's why it, um, hangs out there in a temporary status. Uh, then we filled a correctional officer in the jail, and we had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then, uh, lastly, we've, uh, filled a land use planner position in our property and environmental resources, uh, area. So be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have on those items.
All right. Thank you very much.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 15 in your packet is a resolution, uh, which is required by Minnesota statute, uh, certifying the 2020, uh, 2024 property tax levy. Um, as you're aware, the, uh, county staff began working on the budget in April of this year. Meetings with department heads were held in June, and then work sessions with the county board occurred throughout the summer, resulting in a proposed levy of $45,128,137. The proposed levy is a 5% increase over the levy that was assessed in 2023. And so I'm recommending the 2024 property tax levy of $45,128,137 be certified to the Blue Earth County Finance Director.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion?
Nope, just a comment from me, Mr. Chair. Thank you to the staff and Bob for leading up the charge and putting this budget back together. As we know, it just starts all over again in April. But, um, I think we go through a good process, and I appreciate the time and energy you put in presenting to the county board and educating us on why we need to be where we need to be. So thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you very much.
Item number 16 in your packet is the 2024 budget. Minnesota statute 375A point 06 does require the county administrator to prepare and submit an annual budget and long-range capital expenditure program to the county board. As I mentioned previously, staff have been working on the budget, uh, since early this year. And it has been reviewed a number of times by, uh, the county board in work sessions. Um, as such, I'm recommending approval of the resolution regarding the 2024 budget, which projects expenditures at $127,323,29. And I too would like to take a moment just to thank the staff that worked on bringing this all together. I get the benefit of bringing it to the board today, but it really is a product of many, many, uh, staff in our county. And, uh, they do a nice job of bringing forward information that I think is beneficial to our community.
I would move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. That passes. Salary adjustments.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, um, item number 17 in the packet is a memo regarding, um, salary adjustments for our non-union and elected officials. Um, our practice has been, uh, historically to approve general wage adjustments for all non-union employees, uh, supervisors and department directors that are the same as we have negotiated with our labor unions. Um, as you know, the county has worked with David Drone and Associates, a, um, employment-related consultant that's looked at, uh, the market and our positions and our wage scale. And so, uh, we used them to go through a comprehensive, um, classification and compensation study in 2022. We also have been consulting with them throughout 2023 as the labor market remains volatile, I would say. And so, um, for 2024, I'm here today recommending a three and a quarter percent general wage increase for all non-union employees and elected officials. In addition to that three and a quarter, I recommend a one-time 3% market adjustment effective January 1st, 2024. This would apply to all grades of the pay plan as well as, uh, to elected officials. I also have a list of the recommended salaries for elected officials effective January 1st of '24. And while this action today that I'm bringing forward for the Board's consideration would only apply to non-union employees and elected officials, this would, uh, if approved, um, result in some, um, articles in union contracts where we would need to reopen those contracts and have further conversation, uh, with our unions to apply that 3% market adjustment. And we are prepared to make that outreach, assuming again that the Board is supportive of these recommendations. So there's three actions that I'm asking, um, from the Board today. One is, uh, the approval of the non-union general wage increase and the one-time market adjustment. Then secondly, setting the elected official salaries as stated in the memo. And then thirdly, authorization for the county administrator to execute MOUs with exclusive rep, representatives of the collective bargaining units, uh, to implement that one-time market adjustment. I'm asking for that authorization mostly, uh, for the sake of time because, uh, we want to get these MOUs completed so payroll can be set up, uh, appropriately for that.
Can we do all three at the same time?
I believe you can.
I'll move approval.
Second.
I got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. All right.
Thank you. Item number 18 in your packet then is, uh, our annual review of, uh, the employee reimbursement policy relative to, uh, per diem rates. Um, our current per diems are set at $100 per day, calculated, um, according to a $60 per half-day for, um, timeframes up to four and a half hours, and then, uh, $100 for a full day, uh, per diem. And so this, um, particular memo does not recommend any change for 2024, but bring it forward for the Board's consideration today.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. That passes.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, uh, item number 19 in your packet is a memo regarding, um, authorizing county drainage inspector actions. Um, as the Board is aware, you've previously authorized, um, county drainage staff to, um, authorize repairs up to $15,000 on a ditch system, uh, with inflation and the cost of the work associated with ditch systems. We're recommending today that, um, that authorization be increased to an estimated cost not to exceed $25,000 and that there is a positive, um, available balance in the repair account. That $25,000 does or is consistent with our procurement policy, allowing department heads and staff to make those, uh, level of purchases. And so we're actually making it a little more consistent with our procurement policy while also giving our drainage staff a little more flexibility.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. All right. On Commissioner's report on committees, um, Patty, you want to start us out this morning?
Sure. Uh, on the 12th, we had the employee appreciation event. On the 14th, I had an intergovernmental meeting with the City of Montego, and on the 14th, the Township Association quarterly meeting. And that ends my report.
Okay, Kevin?
Since, uh, last week's board meeting for me, which seems like wasn't that long ago, um, but only nine items, which shows how December meetings get front-loaded in the front half of the month, maybe. Employee appreciation's been mentioned, also attended the budget hearing. On the 13th, there was a CD 51 landowner meeting. On the 14th, drainage work group met. I also attended the floodplain open house and the township officers meeting. Yesterday, the Blue Earth One Watershed One Plan, we had our second meeting of that group. So we're getting up and going with that, as well as a Zoom meeting with NICO regarding rural EMS. And this morning, uh, was our JD 36 bid award meeting. That concludes my report.
Mark?
Okay, on the 12th, we did have the employee appreciation social event. And then, uh, as Kevin said, the 24, 2024 budget hearing in the evening. Uh, and then on the 13th, I did have a NICO, Mike, Mike, uh, just online. And then getting up there, of course, we got that coming up, uh, this coming, uh, first January. And then, um, had the, um, December 14th, had the Blue Earth County Townships Association. And then on the Friday, the 15th, had all seasons arena, uh, moving ahead with, uh, improvements to the building. And then, of course, we have a JD 36 this morning.
Okay. Move to Mike.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every event I had was already mentioned. Seems like we all stuck together this last couple, this last week. But the appreciation event, which I thought went over very well, thank you to Jesse and everyone that helped work on that. And Stephanie, um, went off really well, had a good conversation with several people, the truth and taxation hearing. Good presentation by Bob. Nice to see no one came to testify and complain, but that was good, good to see. Intergov, then Township Officers meeting, and Ditch 36 this morning.
Okay. And for my sake, I, I had about the same. Employee appreciation, I had my budget hearing, or your budget hearing for the county. Um, on Wednesday, I had a Transportation Alliance Board of Directors meeting on Zoom. And then, uh, we had the Township meeting on Thursday, and that would be the end of mine. And, uh, a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed the same. Thank you very much. How's that?
Good job, Mr. Chair.